So, we're gonna have a meeting.
Okay.
So, welcome to the January 21th Bristol Planning Commission meeting. And we are starting tonight by seeing if there's any changes to the agenda, which there are, correct?
I think so.
Well, let's see. We're gonna do the minutes later. No, we're gonna do the minutes later. Yeah, I can read if I hold it on here. I had discuss the subdivision regulations under new business. I'm actually going to, Chris, if it's okay with you.
Go ahead.
Ask, move that up to administrative matters and I'd like to just have Chris, and if he agrees to go over kind of the procedure that we have to go through once we, once the subdivision regs get, there's a couple of different steps that we have to do to get them integrated into our zoning. So, I would like to move that up to administrative matters so we can just have a general discussion about that. And then, then we were going to just have a final discussion and hopefully vote on the enhanced energy plan, but we want to make sure that we all feel comfortable about having that vote if not everybody is here. Okay. And then we're all, okay, we're going to then also add, Andrew brought another section in paper form.
Oh, I brought the maps for it.
The maps for it. It's not, the text isn't written, but introduce a fluvial flood, the flood, what's the official term?
The flood resilience.
Flood resiliency section. So, we're going to start with Chris, but he's in the other room.
Yeah, I would say you want to start on your plan. I'm gonna be probably five minutes.
Okay. So, that brings us all the way to the enhanced energy plan. So, maybe we should have a discussion about how everybody feels, any questions, and if we want to go ahead and have a vote tonight. I didn't hear from a few people. We do have five people. We, you know, we've talked about it a lot, so why don't we just have a, we can have a motion to move forward on it and we can still have a discussion.
You make a motion to move forward with the adoption of enhanced energy plan as presented.
Is there a second? We need to have a second.
I'll say, I'll second, so we have discussion.
Okay. So, and so let's, is there any discussion?
So, I heard that the paper copy that just went out has a different rev date on it.
A different what date?
Rev date.
Revision date?
Revision date, yeah.
It should say 1/16 at the top.
Is that the same as what we had before?
That's the one Andrew sent out last week with the other plan stuff.
Yeah, okay, so here's, here's my problem.
Okay.
I assumed that nothing had changed from the last printout, so...
The only thing that changed was the stuff at the end that we talked about. There was one acronym that I had to correct in the first paragraph, the LEAP, and then in the citing, the changes that we talked about needed to happen for that impact in the discussion. Let's see if I can get to it.
Oh, was that that business about wind towers or something?
Yeah, so the terminology, the supporting and encouraged for solar and then on wind, the prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah, so instead of saying discouraged, prohibited, just saying prohibited on industrial scale wind, so taking out the, so that's page 30 of 42 on the document.
Okay, so last up, last updated, 1/7 on 2.
So, yeah, so it says 1/7, it's actually 1/16 for the upper right, which should be on every page. But when I did that, I neglected that part under the title. So, that, that section on page 30 and then there was an acronym that, as I was reading it, we realized there's the long-range energy alternatives planning model, or left-off board planning, and on page two. Those are the only changes since our last meeting.
I believe.
I think I've been here.
Believe yourself.
So, this last draft, is this something the state's gonna, sees okay?
As far as we know.
Well, it still has to go to the select board.
Yeah, it has to go to the select board.
From here goes the select board.
Yeah.
And then it actually goes to regional planning, but they, as long as it's been approved by the planning commission and the select board, have always said yes.
Okay.
And then, Public Utilities Commission. And we don't know yet whether any of them, none of them, we haven't had any get that far, I don't think, from Addison County.
Oh, yeah, yeah, one is there now.
So, that's Moncton's, most likely, yeah?
No, no, it's not Moncton's, it's Lester.
Lester.
I was gonna say, they were the first to do it, right, Lester?
Yeah. Moncton's is not, Moncton's is approved by the planning commission, it's actually on my desk to be informally reviewed. And the select board, I believe, because it's part of their plan, like us, they have to vote it, they have to wait to a voting date to approve it as part of their plan. They're also updating their plan. So, it, they would be, they're head of us, but the same process, because they're one of the few other towns that has a vote to approve their plan.
As long as it's here, that's gonna be...
Right. Bristol does, and Moncton's, so they're, they're hoping to bring it to their town meeting in March.
Okay. This won't happen for us, no.
I can't imagine.
So, what's the warning period?
It's this, for the, I think it's 30, it's 30 days for a hearing.
Okay. And we're still gonna, we talked about doing a presentation at some point, too. Is that something we're gonna still do?
For the whole plan, which this would be part of, we were talking about that. We had talked, come on, generally about it being March 10th, but I'm not gonna be able to do that. So, we were, I was gonna propose, and I don't know if Holly Hall's free because I didn't check, I think it's the 24th or the 23rd of March. So, how I envision that, and we can, you know, talk about it as a group, but to, you know, take, have a bunch of tables, so say you have an energy table and display, a bunch of the maps, and, you know, just kind of take some of the big points and do a display so people can and have maybe, you know, someplace where people to leave comments, have members of our board there to answer questions, and it's really kind of like a show and tell in a way.
Yeah.
So, that would be one table. We'd have a forest fragmentation or natural resource table with that information. We should have a land use table, you know, and what we, and we can just, at that point, hopefully we'll have a lot of the maps done. We can enlarge them and put them on, you know, bigger boards, that maybe print out some of the goals.
It seems to be the natural process, so that's good. Who at, planning commission, or rather, I'm slipping my mind here all of a sudden.
Regional planning.
Andrew's from?
Regional planning.
North Carolina.
Who scrutinizes that there? Is it, you might have answered this question, but...
We have, oh, the...
The energy plans?
We usually have a staff member look over it, which presumably would not be one of us.
Would not be one of us.
So, one of the other, probably I don't know.
Some individual on there.
Right. And what, and what happens is that determination standards, which are shared with everybody, basically those are the, based on state statutes and goals for energy base, that came from Act 1, not 71, 174. And it, it's basically checking, like, does the plan meet blah, 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 blah? And you say yes on page here, here's, you know, it's pretty straightforward.
It was a check off.
And that's why, you know, I brought that out before, to, you know, it's not very, it's not really very subjective.
Standards, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is their check off essentially?
Yes.
Which is what we use as a starting point to write it.
Okay, so, yeah, that, okay, too.
It's kind of...
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm, do you have more questions? I'm feeling, I mean, what do people, how do people feel about having a vote tonight without, well, Bill, Bill Ser wouldn't vote.
Right.
What?
What?
Is his, is his concern to recuse himself legitimate in your, in your opinion?
He's on the board of Vermont Gas.
I know, but...
He, I think so. He feels very...
But we're talking about energy, we're not talking about, I mean, there is a clause about natural gas in there, but it's in...
He feels strongly about that, so...
Yeah, I mean, in all reality, conflict of interest, unless he's got a personal financial gain, there's really not a conflict of interest there.
Well, anybody can recuse themselves, right?
Right.
Okay, so, you know, you do this. And he's just being crystal bettered, I guess. Well, that's fine.
It's usually if you, I mean, it's hard to not have a conflict of interest around here. It depends on how you, you know, view that, you know, and it's kind of, if you're not gonna game financially, but Vermont Gas could game financially if it got voted down and, I don't know, could. I mean, I don't know. Or it could game financially if it got voted for, you know, I don't know. I mean, I don't really think it's gonna, it would affect it, but I think he wants, I'm just guessing, I'm assuming, shouldn't do that. I should stop talking about that right now.
It could be anything.
Right.
We had here, the front porch forum had a comment in there from somebody that was concerned about dryer...
I know, we had that conversation before we left. I'm waiting for the response comments. They're gonna be interesting. Okay, so, and I, I'll just, I got an email from Tyler tonight, and Tyler, and maybe you know this, he, he's gonna get off the board.
All right.
So, but he's still on the board now, so I think we still officially have to count him as a member of, and then he puts him on board. It's his two, so, so now that's televised. So, I don't know, what is everybody's feelings? Do you want to wait? I'm surprised Mark isn't here because he was the one who wanted to, yeah, maybe he didn't know, so...
I'm prepared at any point to move forward. It was a concern, I know last time it was a concern if everybody was prepared to move forward and make a decision.
Are the rest of you prepared to move forward and make a decision?
I, I'd rather see more people here. I have mixed feelings about this thing. Depending on the day, I may vote for it or against it, quite honestly.
All right.
So...
And so if you voted against it tonight, then it wouldn't pass? I feel like you're against it tonight.
That's why we shouldn't vote on it tonight.
So, you're trying to tell me?
Cole Ray, let's keep the energy handy.
We're not, this is not intended, hey! You know, it's not intended to take anything away from anybody. And I was hoping that, you know, we could get it to a point where people would feel comfortable with it. And that was really our, you know, the goal of these last couple of months, so, I mean, I would, you know, that's, we've been trying to get that out on the table so we could work together.
Yeah, I think there's been an awful lot of work put into this, and I think it's, you know, all of a sudden we're beating a horse here, but I think I'm ready to go forward, but I kind of agree with Kevin on this, and I think it would look better for the board if we had a strong participation in the vote.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's just too bad that we don't have everybody.
No, it's concerns that were voiced last time, where they pretty much met in these revisions, because there's, you know, a couple of people had concerns, that's why they're in another week, or another two weeks, and they do, pretty much get answered, those questions.
Well, the concerns were kind of from Tom, and I think you hadn't, didn't have a chance to read everything, and we, and Kevin, I mean, we had, I thought, I mean, Mark was ready to go ahead and, and Bill, well, Bill's not here, so...
I think the main one was just clearing up the language on mostly the industrial scale wind. I don't think there was anything else.
Yeah. Okay, so...
Well, if we choose not to make the vote tonight, can you, can we put a push on to get everybody here?
For the next meeting?
For the next meeting, which...
When is that?
It's the...
Is it two weeks or three weeks? For two weeks, which would be the 4th.
The 4th of February. We have a hearing that night.
Okay.
Two, four.
I have a whole lot more to talk about, but...
No, that'll be, that would fit in well then, if we were to table the vote.
Yeah, we don't need to table it because it's not a public hearing, right now. It's not technically table.
It was a public hearing.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not, well, tonight's not a...
It's under motion, so we gotta do...
Oh, oh, you did, you did, I'm sorry. Okay, so I guess we do need to table, that, oh, no one's taking notes here either. Nice. We do need to take notes. Come on. Kevin, thank you. It's hard for me to take notes and run.
They may be kind of fuzzy at the beginning.
That's right. Well, we just need to say that we opened the meeting, you got that, that...
Okay, okay.
Okay, but that Rob made a motion.
And Tom seconded.
Mm-hmm. So, you made a motion to adopt the enhanced energy plan.
So, we're gonna table, I guess we need to...
Right. So, we need to now make a motion to table it.
Amendment.
Amendment.
So, we're tabling the motion. Right, but your motion wasn't to approve the...
It was, we made a motion to vote to move for, you made, your motion was to move forward with discussing the energy plan.
Robert made a motion to move to adopt.
Yeah, moving forward to adopt.
Move forward with the adopt.
That's not, I mean, it's, the motion needs to be, I make a motion to approve the energy plan as approved.
Okay.
So, you could actually basically vote on or just drop your motion, or amend the motion, and it would be fine, because you really didn't make a motion to go anywhere as official.
Okay.
Not specific enough, gotcha.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
So, it means you have to, you have to withdraw.
We withdraw.
Why withdraw my motion?
All in favor of that? Or we need to, do we need to second that? Do we need to vote on that?
It's withdrawn.
It's withdrawn.
It's withdrawn, it's withdrawn.
That's someone's knocking on something.
Someone's giving an email.
Looks like Mark.
Looks like Mark. His name is Guitar. Mark!
No guitar this time.
No. Well, yeah. We can try again.
Just in time.
Just in time. We just withdrew our motion to adopt because we didn't have enough people here.
Well, it wasn't very clear either, so...
You have five, isn't that a quorum?
It is, but it's just over half, so, there was some concern about having a stronger presence when the vote was taken.
And now we're six.
Now we're six out of...
Sit down. Swearing.
I mean, in all reality, Steve, by your next meeting, I'm interested to forward, Tyler will be, probably won't be a, won't be a voting member.
Right.
And Bill recuses himself, so the opportunity to be missing was to be hit a bill.
Yeah.
Right.
Potentially if everybody was here.
And then, and then we would need a majority of four. Well, four?
Well, if we didn't have Tyler.
If you have eight members, majority, it would still be five. Four is a tie.
I thought, I thought quorum was still based on the number of seats on the board, not number of occupied, because that's what we ran into when we were down to five undershot a little bit.
Yeah. We still had to have five here to do anything.
Oh, yeah, it's officially, yes, yeah, it doesn't change.
It's a nine-seat board.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, please. I was so looking forward to that, finishing something.
We wouldn't have been so pushed to fill those empty seats if it remained at five then, right?
Wait, are we still not gonna vote on it?
Well, we just withdrew the motion.
Oh, we don't wanna re-motion?
Well, let's, maybe we move along a little bit here. All right, let's get back to Chris.
Administrative.
I, I, you did see and hear on the agenda, it says discuss process for reviewing and adopting, adopting subdivision regs. So, do you want to update where we are with that?
Yeah.
And then what the process will...
Well, to adopt them is, it's, actually, we, we'll start, we'll start backward. So, the verbiage for the actual subdivision regs, I received a draft copy, it's still having one small section that needs to be reworked last week, I worked on it yesterday, sending comments back tomorrow, and hopefully we can have something actually that can go out this week, next week, to discuss further.
As unified regs, right.
Correct, so that's where it's going next. So, your next question was how do we move forward? The moving forward is that we will be going from tech, from technically zoning regulations to a unified planning document is what the term is, where it incorporates the subdivision regs in, directly into your, merges the two into one. As far as adopting them goes, it will be a town vote. It's, it's basically, it's a change to the zoning as we know it as a whole. So, that's at the same point in time that, as we get closer, we, any other changes that we look at that really should happen in the zoning, like I said, I've got about half a dozen that I've run into in the last couple of years that are just, there were oversights, minor snafus when we did the zoning overhaul last time, because we, I guess we started page one and went all the way through, and sometimes things got, you know, overlooked or misconstrued, and we can easily fix those. None were earth-shattering, you know, it's little things like, oh, some uses could be added or removed to some, some of the zones, some of the dimensional standards are a little weird. There's some talk, we had talked previously about maybe doing some density bonusing and maybe rolling that in. But all that gets done, it goes to the same process where there's at least one public, I think we have to have a public hearing, we approve it, then it goes to the select board, they have a public hearing, then it goes to public vote. All that being said, not going with, August is the timeframe, that would be as soon as you can pull that off. Select board's not gonna touch anything until it's a town meeting, and then to get the hearing is a 30-day warning on that, and then they have to vote, so...
Is that for interim also, or...
Interim, the select board could actually, could actually do it in one, one hearing and one board vote, but if we're gonna do this, we might as well do it all as one and do it correctly. That way, we don't have to have an interim and then two months later do it all over again. There's nothing in the pipeline at the moment.
Well, if we miss, if we miss August, well, then we should do an interim.
Absolutely, that's, and that's sort of the goal. Then the biggest shift that we'll see is, we no longer will have a zoning board adjustment. It will go to a planning commission and development review or to DIV model. How people are gonna be assigned to that or sign up for that is still up in the air. Most communities have just basically can change the title of their ZVA. The problem is, I'm not sure if our ZVA, if our zoning board is, wants that role or not. I think they've gotten pretty used to, in the last two years since we changed the zoning regs, they've had three meetings.
How many people are on there?
They've been pretty, getting used to not doing much.
Six and two alternates.
Then they would be doing a lot.
Then it goes to, they'll be meeting twice a month, similar to what you guys are doing now. So, most DIVs, at least in the summer months, spring, summer months, meet every other week. It's the only way you can pull it off, even in smaller towns that aren't that busy. I know Pan meets once a month minimum, and there's something on their agenda every month as far as hearing usually go. Moncton's every other, every other week. I foresee here being, the DIV probably being a twice-a-month type of meeting. And that's where I think the ideal situation would be to have a joint meeting with the zoning board and you folks, and lay out what the expectations of the two boards are, and then give people the opportunity to say, I'm interested here, or I'm interested here, wherever you all want it. I mean, is, some folks are interested in the planning side of it, and some people were actually more interested on the hearing and, and land development decision-making process than the actual writing plans and modifying bylaws, which is really what the planning commission will become. Most towns, you won't have another hearing, hopefully, once that happens with this board. Your planning commission's plan and your, and your DIV's...
It's all DRB, it's all application.
Development review board's review. I mean, their titles really say what they should be doing, and redefining themselves. So, they, right now, you, you guys do a lot of the site planning hearings, and there's no sense in doing that, splitting them out. You should just have a DIV that does all your here. It's a consistent, one-stop shop for folks. So, that's sort of the game plan. Really hoping that's where it goes. And like I said, I got stuff from Adam last week, it was, they looked great, there's some, now it's incorporating our existing bylaws and modifying the current bylaws to reference back correctly to the subdivision regs that were created, so, it makes me progress.
So, what's outstanding?
To modify the existing zoning regs to reference the new subdivision regs and the proper boards. Other than that, we actually made a lot of progress in the week.
What's required for the board changes? Are there anything with town or votes as far as disbanding the ZVA, creating the DRB?
No, because you define both those two boards in your, in the unified planning doc.
Right.
And that's really where it occurs.
And it's the select board's job or role to assign people, although I, they probably, I mean, we're all on boards already.
Right.
I think it's a discussion.
Technically, I think, if somebody wanted to stay on, if any of you all wanted to stay on the planning commission...
They're appointed, not assigned.
Yeah, you wouldn't, your, your appointment probably wouldn't change, but if you wanted to move from this board to the DIV, or somebody from the zoning board still wanted to be involved, but would rather sit on the planning commission, then they would have to appoint those people to their new positions. Existing positions wouldn't change necessarily.
It's kind of a formality.
It is.
Can you talk back, excuse me, but I'm not clear, I don't know if I got it written down here clear, the new term is zon, unified zoning regs?
Unified planning document.
Unified planning document?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions for Chris?
So, yeah, so if all goes well, I'll have copies emailed out for you guys to review, and then we can have a discussion. There really isn't, just from reviewing them, there's nothing earth-shattering in these. It's really...
Oil and pipe.
It's, yeah, we went, we, I wanted it fairly vanilla. There was no sense in creating a very complex process. I work in some towns that it is fairly complex, and there's no sense in doing that. I wanted to start with the vanilla, start the process, and as time went on, if we saw that there were either pieces missing or that more clarity needed to occur, then you do revisions. But start basic and work outward, it didn't, I didn't want to overcomplicate to begin with.
I think what would be helpful is, as Chris mentioned, since, since we updated the zoning regs and...
When was that?
Two thousand seventeen, that was done. Things have been coming up and realized, and this happens all the time, and there's kind of a list of things that, you know, we've talked about that should be changed or added or whatever. It might be good if you could type those up and, and send them to everybody.
Yeah, well, when, when I have the UPD, um, I will send out that list of changes as well. When we have the subdivision stuff, I'll do it all one shot.
And, and it's also opportunity for anybody on here, maybe, maybe we should let the zoning, uh, the ZVA also know. They, they may have some suggestions of things they want.
So, they really haven't heard much, so.
Hey, they should, maybe we should give them a heads up.
Yeah, I plan on giving, uh, emailing Kevin Brown to communicate that to his group.
Okay, that would be good. And so, this would be an opportunity if they have any issues in the zoning regs, that they would be able to, what?
We haven't seen any that they've dealt with directly that have been like, oh my god, this is a big issue.
They may, yeah.
So, and the, and the other token too is, uh, I know everyone has so much free time on their hands, and, and everyone loves some good light reading. Review the zoning regs. If you see things that are just either odd, uh, don't make sense, uh, or you'd like to see changes to, send, send what you'd like to do, and I can try to incorporate them in or explain. There may be a reason why something is very unique, and there may be some background in why it was done that way. Um, and, but from there, we can, I can give Adam to the, the change table or the requested changes or, um, however you would like to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay. New business?
Oh, I gave you your minutes, that's what it's.
Oh, minutes?
I dropped my stack.
Oh. Okay, here are minutes from our last meeting. About two pages. Two pages, or do you have?
You got it? Okay. You're perfect as far as.
I wanted to make sure you were on, just kidding, had a chance at least. In case you forgot. We could talk about that. Make a motion to approve the minutes of January seventh, twenty twenty.
I'll say again.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion is approved. Mark, also before you got here, we talked about, um, the open house that we're going to have for the plan. And talked about the date of March, is it twenty third or twenty fourth?
It's Tuesday?
Yeah.
And then there would be the twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth. I don't know if Holly Hall is free then. Are you able to check that on your? No?
Don't give me access to the calendar.
What?
I don't have access to that calendar.
I, yeah, you do. It's online. It's online, you just don't want to do it.
I, I don't know where it is, I won't lie to you.
Okay.
I go out on sharing.
It's, it's on the website, maybe.
March twenty fourth is always there.
Yeah, okay. Well, why don't we just plan for that, and I will sit down, and we'll just move, that doesn't work then?
David, you actually need to check with Meredith, who's, who used the hall, so it's under her calendar.
Would that be approximately the same time slot, or?
Um, maybe we should do it a little earlier.
Wait, what do you want to know on the calendar?
Yeah, you got it, twenty fourth of March. Is there anything going on upstairs?
Yeah.
Like a talent show? Auditions? That would work, be convenient.
Tuesday.
So, again, the calendar that's online is for, is just a general board count type calendar, it doesn't tell you what, Meredith is when he's, unless it's.
Yeah, no, I saw, I thought I saw one that had Holly Hall, that had that space. Well, okay, let's do twenty fourth, I will check on it, some.
Oh, so I just converted my, oh, oh. She's got here.
Did you find it?
Oh, dear god, yes. It's very busy, uh, so we want to go to which month, or?
March twenty fourth.
March twenty fourth, they have, just, no, the only thing they have scheduled is after school pottery, the pottery studio at this point.
Okay, let's say six thirty. Pizza, or should we do it earlier then?
There's pizza there.
Yeah. Six?
Six.
Let's do six, six o'clock. Pizza, Holly Hall, March twenty fourth. Okay. So, can I hand it over to you yet?
So, who's, I don't know where we are.
Who's?
Going to be preparing everything for that?
Uh, probably me.
Well, we, what we said, um, I mean, it's basically going to be pieces of the plan. Enlarged, you know, enlarged maps, maybe we enlarge some of the goals and policies and, um, we'll need to.
Probably assign somebody to each table?
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need enough planning commission members here, it'd be great if everybody came.
So, actually, you got a conflict with that probably, no, that matters.
Are you talking to yourself, or?
Maybe you're talking about, he has a conflict.
That you can't, that, okay, well, let me answer your question. Well, there's tables up there, you know, we'll, we'll need to get there a little earlier, set things up, I mean, well, it's not going to be that big of a deal. Someone will have to pick up the pizza, you know.
Would you say? I, I was, I was more concerned if the logistics had been thought out about the presentation.
Yeah. Well, I mean, not exactly what it's going to be, um, but I think at that point, you know, we have, the material will be prepared enough and it, it, you know, it's still in draft form, it won't be adopted yet. So, the idea is to get feedback, so, but generally, we want to, you know, have the maps and the goals and that sort of thing, and.
I think the thought is to make a kind of a drop in, not necessarily like, we're doing a presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we'll have to do a little marketing of it, get it in the paper and maybe put some posters up or something like that.
For each forum?
Yes.
From each forum, yeah, and maybe some people will come. If there's pizza, so.
Marshmallow.
Okay. All right, so did, uh, do you want to?
Sure. Uh, if we're ready to jump in. So, we took a look at the sections at the beginning, uh, which we're now calling the people section. Cause it's sort of the background, uh, and required some digging for updates. So, the three listed sections that I sent out, the demographic profile, economic profile, and housing profile. There is a separate economic development section that is supposed to be more forward looking. This economic profile is supposed to be sort of a snapshot of where Crystal is in terms of jobs and businesses, um, and. Employment wages. Trying to keep it fairly brief, uh, so it's not too much of a report, but, um, we were basically just updating what was in the plan from last time and trying to keep it pretty parallel. Uh, there are some updated figures, we tried to convert a lot of the more lengthy tables, um, into figures. And have, we'll try to have the sources on all of those, so that people, if people really want to look up the exact numbers, they can, or do something with the data they can, or they can ask us. But, if folks have feedback on that and want to, we could just start with the demographic profile. Which basically starts with a formation of the town section, which surprisingly has not changed. Although, I, I did add the thing about, uh, the name possibly being after the manufacturing city in Rhode Island. Because they found that in the Vermont Encyclopedia of History. Uh, which is footnote at the bottom, or the Vermont Encyclopedia.
Crystal?
Didn't know that.
Yeah. Not England, but Rhode Island.
Of course, Rhode Island.
Which is probably, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So, what's the, uh, story on some of the tables that you said are not included or shouldn't?
So, yeah, so those, those ones on the very back page where it says, don't leave these tables, question mark? Those are the origin, from the, from the last version of the plan. For at least those, because they're, uh, a lot of them, uh, have, we have estimates from the American Community Survey for twenty seventeen, I think is the most recent. But obviously, we don't have twenty twenty yet, because that's, and it's just getting started. Uh, so we don't have the next ten year gap, so we could either just include it as is. Or if we do have updated numbers, I've, I've put them in the tables, uh, or the figures that are above. If folks have a preference and want to have the tables as well, we could keep them.
Well, a lot of those tables you converted into graphs or charts. And I think it's just, um, just tells a better story, it's easier. It's less visually for me, and I think for most people than to, you know, you can, it's better to see comparisons. And, you know, it's a little, it's just, it's a better picture, I, I think, to see.
It's a little more graphic.
And then, um. So, I think we, you covered pretty much all those charts. There was one that I was thinking about that we didn't discuss, which is the natural increase and decrease. Which, it hasn't, a lot of things haven't changed too much since.
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand almost, and two thousand, definitely since two thousand and ten.
Yeah, I mean, there's still declining young people and declining number of births and increasing number of deaths, so.
This is sad commentary.
Yeah, but, I mean, important for, you know, school planning and.
Oh, yeah.
That kind of thing. There are multiple, uh, projections of population that, you know, we don't really know, but some are starting to look more accurate than others. Household size, I think we.
That's more than housing.
Start, yeah, started to get into, what does that mean for housing if we have the same number of households, but they're, or sorry, smaller households.
Yeah, smaller households.
Get to the.
Yeah. So.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, the demographic sort of ends on the household size, which then jumps into the household profile. So, it's basically just an overview. If you guys want to take some time and look at it more, and if you see things on the graphs that, um, they need some tweaking in terms of making sure they're consistent. Colors and sources, um, listed, so if you see stuff, feel free to write it or email me. But, I think for now, we're pretty close. When we, when we get to the final document, it'll be, take some formatting.
I think it, I'm gonna present.
The same, same kind of applies for housing profile, I don't know.
Do you have the economic?
So, I actually, I, I can't see figure four on here for some reason, but, so I had a, I looked at it and I made a comment about.
Oh.
Contradictory models between the Addison County Planning Commission. Cause I think if that's the one you've got, like, planning commission says our population is going to go up like this.
Yeah.
And then when the states say that's going to go down like this.
Yeah, that's four.
Yeah, okay.
It, it kind of dropped, so it says figure four, but then it, because of the spacing, it dropped it to the next page.
It's not here anymore.
Okay.
That's the detail, but anyway, so.
That's important.
I don't, I, I don't get why we are using two different sets of data that are so inconsistent.
So, I think the regional plan was done in two thousand or two thousand and ten?
Two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two?
Probably even, so probably looked at.
Which is why it only projects to twenty twenty five, and then the, the ones that have the more declining ones are ones that DPS there, I think. And, yeah, they basically, for both of them, they give a high and a low range of projections, and they were done on like, sort of up to two thousand or two thousand and ten data, depending on when they were done. So, if, if it makes sense to drop the ones that are a bit more speculative and pie in the sky, then, but those are, those are just what's in, in the regional plan, and it's basically a range of, we think it's going to be somewhere in here.
So, that's basically just all the data on projections?
Yeah, that's all you've been able to find.
And so.
At a town.
Now, I see what you're saying.
Regional plan stuff is old and clunky.
Well, it's older, and so, those patterns haven't started yet, so they were, the method is probably the same methodology, it's probably, but it just started earlier. Yeah, I didn't realize that's what we had done, so, really, that, they're kind of coming from the same.
Twenty years ago, it was still on the rise, as opposed to ten years ago where it was.
So, the project.
Project according to the past, and we have, yeah. We have more.
More correct.
Yeah, we're obviously getting closer to some of those downward trends. But it could still, I mean, I think it went up seven?
How come this doesn't go back to two thousand?
I could, I could extend it that way.
I mean, so that's kind of the point that was being made there, that projections that were made earlier saw the population going up.
I get what, I think Kevin was trying to say, why are we using something that's outdated and not accurate with a given data?
Keep the old crusty ones. There's a conflicting set of data points, like, a model, there's two models and they conflict each other, so.
I think it's fun to keep the old one, but then make a note saying, you know, cause it really shows these models are old and as good as.
Well, maybe you could have it in two graphs, in two separate graphs.
Or, to, to Mark's point is, is tell when the data was generated, if it was generated in two thousand and two.
Right, exactly.
Yes, there should be a.
Yeah, I think that's the missing piece.
Then you can, which can just be done over here.
Yeah.
And then, the other lines were generated, what'd you say, two thousand and ten?
Thirteen?
Two thousand and thirteen?
Is that what this ACC did?
Yeah, that's two thousand and ten.
Yeah, make, make point, yeah, that those are the more accurate.
And, and that's just the discrepancies based on the projections at the time they were generated.
Yeah.
Right, which also goes to show that these line, you know, in ten years, this might.
It might change.
It might be, it might be a steep dynamic, you know, it might be very, all, all it's doing is projecting on the current rate. No way.
Well.
Doing a reveal.
Yes and no.
There was.
I guess, I mean, unless we got to find some more people, or not.
There was a, a miser model that predicted, there were, there were, it's actually pretty close, three, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-three in twenty twenty, whereas we have approximately three thousand nine hundred and one. Which was only off by sixty, but twenty twenty was the last point in its, in its models, extending further. So, yeah, we can clarify that, um, that that's a range, and when those projections were done, and maybe that the more recent ones are more accurate or based on, uh.
More recent trends.
Yeah.
All right, are there, are there other ones that, in that section that? All right, are there, are there other ones that, in that section that caught people's eye or need tweaking? Now, make sure the spacing is. Where it puts the figure four with the actual.
Yeah, there's not.
Graph.
There's definitely still titles and labels that need to.
Format it, yeah.
A little formatted to go.
Uh, so next, do you want me to do economics or do you want?
Well, is that, is that the order it's in?
That's the order we received.
Economic, different, or housing second?
It was listed with that, economic, then housing.
That's what that was.
Okay. Yep. So the economic profile has basically some stats on labor force, annual employment. And these are all uh, from the Department of Labor buried on their website.
I just remember about that.
Yeah, that dip in twenty fourteen. You're gonna have to take that up with the Department of Labor.
Yeah, okay.
A paragraph about where town residents work that. I think in some ways we reference in other parts of the plan, like, I'm pretty sure the energy plan. Uh, when we talk about vehicles, uh, they mentioned that there are quite a few people working outside of town, so cars are somewhat of a necessity. So this, uh, this sort of graphs and Venn diagram are two different ways of showing. People coming into town versus people that live in town and work in town versus people that live in town but work somewhere else, so. If, if you guys have a preference on one of those, it's basically showing the same thing, so.
So is that that figure three?
Yes, the primary jobs info upload.
Yeah, so I had some questions about it. Which I can't see the thing right now, but anyway, um, the term in the title block was. Employed in selection areas, so a selection area would be Bristol, right?
Yeah, so this is, I just clipped from their website, so the selection area is the town.
Yes, we should.
Bristol.
We should explain that.
If I can, yeah.
I don't really like either of them. Personal preference.
You don't like what?
Either of them. As an option.
What would you like?
And, and then the other thing, if you look at, if I understand this chart right. It says you've got three hundred and five people working in Bristol and you got seven hundred and forty-eight coming in.
That is according to the census data that they're pulling from.
So that's like, what, a thousand people?
Yeah, thousand forty.
Thousand fifty-three.
Yeah.
And then somewhere else, we're saying that there's like thirteen hundred and sixty-eight documented jobs and maybe thirty percent more undocumented jobs. So that doesn't align with wherever, that, that statement was in a previous paragraph, right?
Yeah, the thirteen sixty-eight uh, is in the first paragraph.
Yeah, so it doesn't align with section A.
Twenty seventeen versus twenty eighteen and the way that people are counted in jobs.
Yeah.
Is like, is it their primary job, is it a secondary job? Do they count, you know, if you're self-employed, a lot of times then it's based on like insurance numbers and.
I read one place where they only count employees if you have, if you're, if you have insurance through work. Right, and that, a lot of people do not have insurance through work.
But, yeah, so the, the section A was something about labor, labor statistics, which would be, would reflect that.
The labor, yeah, labor force from the Department of Labor.
Yeah, and then there was a comment about, well, there may be thirty percent more undocumented. And this thing, well, this thing's like three hundred shy of that base number. So I don't know.
Thirty percent?
Yeah.
We're not close.
Anyway.
Part of that maybe because there was some increase from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen.
Three hundred?
But not three hundred.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if there's just an expla- explanation, again, if there's an explanation where the data is coming from.
Yeah, I can dig into it and see if there's something that's more easily explainable. And we can also, if, if folks agree with Robert, that uh. Those figures are not the most helpful or could be more helpful in a different format.
Show them one of Kevin's maps, not your map, different Kevin.
Uh, yeah, do we have that?
Well, they're what we have in the plan before.
Right.
But they're not in the printed.
So in the previous plan. You know, the problem with this is, is that Robert's gonna like these better. We're gonna have to go back to this. Uh, there was a commute shed and a labor shed. Map, uh, which we were.
You can't just say no to everything.
Which, well.
Isn't it right?
So basically showing those two different patterns where people go to and where people come from. Based on, I guess, census information.
This is definitely more concise.
Yeah, I.
That's what we were going for, yes.
Yeah, that's, I, I said, I don't wanna do that.
But if you wanted to know exactly where people live-ish, at least approximately.
I mean, I agree with the one on the left, the, the two circles in the intersection area.
That's two.
That's, that's two.
The, you know, like the Venn diagram.
Eating stuff.
Okay.
But the other one, the in and out one was.
Yeah.
With some clarification. Okay.
What didn't you like about? Was you, sorry.
It's a little too graphic for me.
Too graphic?
Yeah.
He doesn't like pictures.
I thought you were an engineer.
Yes.
Yes, that's the problem.
Of words.
Not an engineer.
It's not really a Venn diagram. He's not an engineer, he's not really, not with arrows.
Not a proper elusive of Venn diagram.
Yeah, I mean, the one on the left is the closer, is a better, is it easier to picture and follow than the one on the right?
Oh, oh, we have a difference.
I think we have a difference.
In the arrow? You don't get that?
Chris likes the circles. The two circles, because the overlap is very clear when you have people who live in.
Yeah.
Live in town and commute out, commute from out of town or.
Maybe through, maybe well.
Yeah.
Overlapping the milk could mean they come from out of town and then they zip into town and fly right out again.
I don't think you should walk down. You mean computers?
It's an intersection.
I think that's in our traffic, which is a challenge.
Probably, yeah, that's true.
Okay, we don't.
Could also be like two bars, you know, with like jobs occupied by residents, non-residents, and then residents in town, out of town.
Yeah, we can do it.
I don't know, but just another idea that muddy the water.
You know, and, and anyone is welcome to work on this.
Yeah.
Come in with your own diagrams.
Or.
No, seriously.
I'm fine with the one on the right.
If you wanted to man this table at the uh, at the presentation, you could do an experiment and poll people which one they like.
The people. Be the people.
There you go.
To focus questions on that.
Make up some bogus ones, see if you get more response.
People will vote for the, the fake data. Uh, so we have an income and wages, median household income. Uh, which I think we pulled from the previous one, but unfortunately does show a increasing difference between Bristol and the rest of Vermont.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be fine.
Which is printed in black and white. I, I tried to make it so that the legend would line up, but that's a good point, that we should make it so when it's printed in black and white.
Oh, well, I really think it's gonna be formatted for color.
So our wages are going up, but our median household income's around that.
This was.
Wait, did our wages go up?
Yeah.
Well, you know, that could be because there's only one. There are smaller households, maybe it's just one income.
Single, right.
One wage earned.
Single income.
And that is the case in May.
Yeah, so now that you're all demographic and economic profile experts. Katie. Did the housing bit.
So.
So I don't know if they're always, and that's it.
Right. Down arrow, I think. So basically I started talking about number of units in that first uh, graph, chart, graph. Shows that comparing Addison County and Vermont and Bristol. And so, oh no, that's, yeah, so the housing stock did. So we had.
So we basically, we updated the numbers, I think, from twenty ten to twenty seventeen. And then this is an increase, so basically it was going up in the eighties quite a bit. Slackened off in the nineties, started kinda going up.
Oh, that is how, that's per year increase, it's not overall, that's why I haven't looked at this in a while. So um, that's how much happened in that ten-year period or nine-year period, ten-year period. How many, what we had for a housing unit increase. So it's not a total number. So that rate, it's a rate of increase, so that has definitely slowed down, sort of been level since two thousand. But there also, it's interesting because the, it, this first paragraph talks about, uh, compares it with the population increase. We really only had a population increase of seven people since two thousand and ten in Bristol. And so then the next graph.
Like we're saying, we must have less people per house.
Exactly, so we didn't have a population increase, but, but then there's.
We're spreading ourselves there.
Yes, we are.
Get to more housing units, so it's tighter.
Yeah.
Tighter housing market.
And, and because of that, there's a very low vacancy rate, there's very few, and you, you know this, very few units available.
Oh, is it two point something?
Uh, yeah, two point one.
Yeah, typically you count on five percent.
Right.
But it's been historically lower.
Right, and so back in two thousand and ten though, I think I had the rate back there was. Six point three.
Yeah.
Which generally means rents go up.
Right, so, well, rents go up when it's low because it's competitive.
Yeah, that's right, right.
So, um, and that's in talking to the housing people, the affordable housing people, that that, that makes it even harder. Because things don't become available when they're trying to house people um, in affordable houses, that there's just nothing available. So then section on types, location and age of houses. This is also from the um, the American Community Survey, the five-year estimates. Basically looking at what we have in Bristol. Um, in terms of, and the green and yellow are in the village and then the rest, rest of the, the rest of Bristol. So it's not, it's not an either or right now.
So the total would be the total for all of Bristol.
Right, okay.
Is there a better term for village and not village?
No, it's this.
It's, it's always, even though we don't have a village anymore, I mean, it's been, it's always.
Well, there's no, they count the village separately, but then they count all of Bristol, or total number for all of Bristol. So then looking at the different types of housing units in the area, which I thought was interesting. So, I mean, obviously it's mostly single family, detached, but there are, there are other types of housing units. And it's not, and it's pretty evenly um, spread out. It's not like you have more, you know, single family homes in the village, you know, it's, you have same sort of percentage. Close, the same sort of percentage in the villages and the rest of the town. So it's forty percent, seven percent of the total housing units, does that, that means apartment, it means a mobile home, it means a duplex. Um, or a single family home is a housing unit and that's important to understand that terminology. So forty percent of those are in the village. Just a little discussion about how the village sort of developed and the variety of houses there. And where the housing and neighborhoods are in the rest of Bristol and if anyone wants to, you know, add anything to that. You can.
I just found one, I believe it's typo.
Uh-oh.
And it changes the, I mean, just in, under your, right underneath your housing graph, you have where, under your figure X, or.
Housing units.
Oh, they all say.
I see that now. Under housing, housing units by building type and location. Second line, Bristol boom years in the eighteen eighties and the nineteen nineties.
Oh, yeah. I think it's supposed to be the eighteen nineties.
Yeah, so do I. Does it change, is the whole diagram of this?
Those are the boom years.
A century of boom.
Yes, it is supposed to be eighteen nineties. Those were the boom years.
That's how I remember it.
Okay, boomer. So, and then the um, the next graph is, is kinda showing when most of the houses in Bristol were built. So majority of the houses were built before nineteen thirty-nine, which is, it's a, it's an interesting number that they, yearly that chose, but. And there hasn't been a lot built since two thousand and ten. And then there's the homeowner versus renter um, percentage. And that's, as you can see, it's pretty consistent in Addison County and in Vermont.
Addison County's not on there.
Oh, you're right, sorry, but it is. We could have had it on there. It, it's still, it's not on there, but it is.
It just says similar percentage to Addison County.
It's like a twenty-five, seventy-five percentage. Yeah, I, I, it's in the text, we just didn't show them.
So there's nothing bad at scale in those numbers, then?
What?
So there's nothing at that skew or any of those, and the graph makes it look like everything's the same. Makes it seem like there's slightly more rentals in the village?
Yeah.
So then you can see the housing increase on the next graph down. And that's the median home price.
Yeah, Bristol's a little up shy.
Yeah.
Yep, and the wages went down. I mean, the, the median income went up.
Wages went up?
Right.
Thanks a lot. And that's because of the type, the two point one percent, the lower.
Possibly, I don't know, as an expert.
No, you know, I was talking to somebody today, there's a world of difference in just between Chittenden County and Addison County.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have.
Chittenden County and the rest of the state, pretty much.
Well, yeah, that's a joke.
Chittenden County is close to Vermont.
Well, no, if you live in Burlington, you live just outside of.
Well, we.
No, but I mean, there, uh, stock, let's say inventory, the way we talk about it, is very low inventory in Chittenden County.
Right, right.
And, and admittedly, we see more Chittenden County realtors kinda filter into Addison County because of that. So we're seeing them looking for stuff down here.
Yeah.
One of the first questions is, what's the setting system?
That's.
Yeah, so, um, but, and you're hearing another story, I got one earlier this week, I heard a realtor talk about, she had a listing in Essex, I think. It was three or four hundred dollars, thousand dollar house, and they had like fourteen offers on it the first day. Which, I mean, that's, that's what you like to see, but that doesn't happen in Addison County.
Mm-hmm.
It's a different world.
In a certain price range, you probably don't.
Yeah, say in Middlebury, it's getting maybe not fourteen now a day, but there's stuff going, I mean, before it goes on the market.
Yeah, and it, and Middlebury is also different than other parts of Addison County too.
I thought Bristol was like that sometimes, though, Bristol Village.
Yeah, if you get something in the village, yours, it goes pretty quick.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's price right, right?
If it's price right.
Yeah, it depends price, right, it's all about.
Okay, so, are there any questions along the way here?
One question I had, just, I mean, it's just a, back to the mix, I mean, as you see, the, the housing values went up, as you show here on that graph. Is part of that, that we're seeing new construction being so much more costly because people are trying to do either high-efficiency or net zero, net zero homes, which are, as we all know, starting, I mean, the problem is that you can't build for less than three hundred thousand.
Right.
So.
Well, if you, I mean, we're not, people are doing that, you're not, you know, you're actually required to build them at a certain efficiency level if they're, if they're subsidized, or they're, you know, funded by certain funds.
I mean, you have to meet Vermont Energy Standards, it, it should build yourself, any contractor has to.
Right, energy standards, but then there's a higher level. I mean, Robert Fuller's places are much, much more, I mean, he's building net zero, or.
Who's, what he's.
Close to, yeah. And, and same with the co-housing.
Right, so my, well, my question is, as we're seeing that style house occur more, is, are those, because we're seeing a ton of new houses, I mean.
Right.
On the market, and we're seeing a lot of housing turnover, I mean.
I mean, that could, but this, this is 2018, it could be, it could, that could have thrown it.
I mean, we had a bunch of, I mean, there's what, a dozen houses in the co-housing that were all higher-end.
Yeah.
Cost-wise than, than the average, because of the efficiencies.
It's possible.
So.
Those are all pretty high-priced, though, too.
At the co-housing, yeah. Well, yeah, they.
For this area, for Bristol.
Because they're net zero, basically, I mean, that's the, that's the.
Net zero, middle bestest chimneys coming out of the top of them. I guess that's still net zero?
I don't know, I mean, those are, I can't answer that question. They're not net zero, they're net zero-ready, or net zero, they weren't built through those chimneys, those are things owners put in. Their choice. That's what I've learned.
Chimneys coming out?
Go up, walk up a few years, they have, a bunch of them got woodstoves in them.
No, it's a.
Chrome, they're stainless, stainless chimneys.
On the outside of them?
So, let's see.
At some point, so, I think part of the reason for splitting out, like, the demographic and the economic ones, was that we, we do have, in the old version of the plan, we do have a population section. And it has some pretty limited goals and policies, which, you know, targeting population to continue modest growth, maintain age diversity and multi-generational nature. I think we decided, maybe, we're not necessarily necessary for.
So, we might look at having goals and policies at the end of the section, not that for each part of it, that address.
So, it would be more probably housing-focused than anything, just because.
But it's all related, they're all related. And I would like to add on here the affordability, we didn't really talk about it in here, but. The percentage of people who are paying more than thirty percent of their income for, or, in, in many cases, more than fifty percent of their income for housing costs. That means their housing is not affordable for them, which is, and now, these days, I don't know, you probably find this, too, that's, it's a lot of people. It's not just people you think.
So, the lenders like to see is thirty percent, but, like you say, are approaching or exceeding fifty percent.
And, and that, and that is applied to renters, too, and it's probably, well, and what we see, it's about, about the same renters, and there are, there are quite a few people, households, that are paying more. And I think it's like, maybe sixteen percent pay more than fifty percent of their income towards their rent or housing costs.
That's surprising, now.
Which is a lot. And if you're, but if you're a single person, a parent, and that's how it's calculated, you're only making one income, and it's, it's not very affordable. So, that's, it's kind of what I was giving out with that sort of succession of information. But, please feel free to mark it up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just the, some formatting stuff, you know, the other two sections go right into A with no header.
Yeah, I know, we have a header, yeah.
I could see the difference.
Yeah, no, that is kind of.
Um, this last, the housing concerns. Where, where does that stuff come from?
A lot of it comes from the old plan, and then it comes from.
Like this first section talking about.
Well, the housing stock does not meet the needs of the population.
Yeah, and then, new homes being built are too large.
That is, A, it's coming mainly from, like, housing, housing, sorry, I'm trying to, like, Addison County Community Trust, sort of promoting that thinking. And people who are working with people to house them, it, it's kind of a, sort of the supply and demand, or.
So, what's too large, too many bedrooms, is that like a three-bedroom?
The houses, some of the houses that are available.
Is too large?
Yeah, for some of these smaller families, so that's what I'm saying. Or some of the homes that exist in village, for example, are these big old homes, like, for my house, if I was to sell my house.
Right, but this was talking about new homes being built.
But new homes.
That's where I was curious where that stuff came from, I know there's a lot of large, old, old.
I think that's in general, yeah.
Little different scenario.
Maybe that was more of a Addison County line, Addison County as a whole, so.
Because there seems to be a lot of construction now, that's a lot smaller scale, when it's done with, you know, the, like, out on the edge of town, or that kind of stuff, the co-housing, you know, that's not, you know, the other proposed one, out by Mount Ave, that kind of stuff, that's not that.
And this is not in Bristol, I'm sorry, in Virgens, there's that project that got, has had some cruises in the Commodore, that they're a little too big for what people are looking for, inexpensive, even though they're not, what?
It's been in the paper about that, yeah.
Yeah, that's not happening here that much, but I don't, I don't know, we're not really having, thanks for pointing that out, because I think I was thinking.
Just out of curiosity, you know, scale's all relative, especially to different people, so.
Right, and we really don't have a lot of homes being built in Bristol right now, other than these couple of small projects.
But it also, does it also make a difference, or I would think it would, if, there's a certain amount of house, housing that's built on speculation, but there's also a percentage that's built based on.
Demand, being asked to build it?
Yeah, so, you know, it depends, I mean, some, both, both of those situations, you're gonna either ask for what you want, or you're gonna build based on what you think somebody wants, so.
Right.
And recently, I think the trend's been to just sell the land, and then it's built on demand.
Built on demand. I don't know if that drives the housing, the size of things, because if, you know, somebody's, you know, the three-bedroom house concept is, is, is what's normal, if you will. Until that mindset changes, people are gonna wanna build that, and then, well, the third bedroom's an office, or whatever the case may be.
Well, the, the biggest driving piece with a lot of developments I speak to on a regular basis, has nothing to do with demand, it has to do with cost of build. The fact that they have to put infrastructure in, the cost of laying down all the roads. By the time you lay, put in your infrastructure between your roads, your SECTIT, your, the hearings, possibly AT250. If, if you're only building two hundred thousand dollar homes, your ROI on it, your return on investment is so small, you really wanna build a three hundred thousand dollar home to get a bigger return on investment, to make it worth your time. They don't build homes because they think it's cool, they build homes to make money. And, so, there are people out there that these developers should be building and making little to no profit, because it should be for the greater good, well, that's cute. But the reality is, developers are developing to make a living. So.
No, that, that's very true, even at the co-housing, even at the co-housing, they're putting in, well, let's just put another bedroom in. Because it's not gonna cost me more, but I, but the house is gonna be worth more.
Yeah, and it's more market.
I mean, it is gonna cost more, but it's not gonna cost as much as, you know, proportionally to what I'm gonna get.
To add more square footage to, is, is not that expensive compared to what you weigh down all the expenses for your, for your just development and not actually putting on a house yet.
And trying to sell a two-bedroom is much harder than trying to sell a three-bedroom home, from experience.
Yes, but what this does in here would be smart, is the family size is getting smaller anyway.
Right, so, then, how do you, how can you do that? Because it seems like that is what we.
I mean, the big trend, or the big driving demand in all the communities I work in, and the developers would love to do it, there's just no cost-effective way to do it. I mean, I spent two hours with Kevin Harper going over his project over here, as we call them, the starters and the enders, the first home, first home, time home buyers and retirees. It's the biggest demand right now, is the small, thousand-square-foot, two-bedroom, single-story homes. Great starters, great enders.
Yeah, that's what we need, but you can't, right.
Nobody can build it affordable, I mean, Kevin's doing everything he can and looking at grant money to try to offset the cost, just to make them so they're even remotely affordable.
But to build them, he, he needs, and if he gets that money, then he has to make them.
Some of them.
Yeah, well, there's a formula, you have to then, you have them efficient, more than just meeting the energy standards.
It depends on which grant it's.
Right, depends on where your money's coming from.
But, the, and that seems to be, I mean, construction numbers locally have been, we saw probably the biggest uptick last year in new home construction in Bristol. I mean, we saw in twelve new homes built last year versus the year before was only six. So, we're, we're seeing those numbers, we're, we're not seeing developments go in, but we're seeing individual homes being built on, on small lots. I know, like, the permits and parcels that we, the PUD that was approved up there, they finally built the first home up there. Kevin Pulse has built a handful on the subdivision, he did O'Connor Drive and above, not me, handbrought. So, we're seeing some new homes go in, it'll, bigger increase last year than I, than we had in, due, even, the data I have from these back through two, twenty fourteen, it's still the busiest year we've had.
And then, what about row houses or apartment complex, or?
Well, we had.
More affordable?
It's like Megan's Meadows.
Well, it, they're, they're, one of the smallest, should be run into that, is also density. We may have miscalculated our densities when we did housing density. We don't really.
Well, that's another, that's a big issue, and that, the.
Oh, because you can't, it's not legal to insert.
Well, you can do that kind of housing, but.
It comes down to the zoning regs.
Two in the, in the parcel you have, so why would you just do a two-unit row housing?
Because the density is based on your, on your zoning regs, how many housing units.
Zoning regs.
You need a lot of data to offset.
Right, so, I mean, the great example is Susan Bowen owns the apartments down on Lover's Lane. She's got a building in front right now, currently to build two new apartments down there, two apartment buildings. They, her original plan, she was forced to.
Woodside, or, woodside, woodside apartments, or whatever, woodland.
Yeah, basically where the old well was, where the old well happens, and that's all been approved by the zoning board, and, but the problem is the density, one building has three units and one building has two. Her other units are, have all had double that density. And so, she's, everything's on hold, because right now, she can't cost justify building these things. And what, she wanted to know if there's any way around, and I'm like, nope, we have no adjustments in our density. So, multifamily units, we sort of kind of hamstrung ourselves, that's one of my changes I got on my list, by the way.
Well, that's an important change, that's a change that the whole state, those kind of changes, a lot of communities are looking at, going back to their zoning, and really trying to, or trying to convince people that it's okay to have. Higher density in the central villages and centers, so that you can, because if you look at it, you have it, I mean, it's definitely possible. And some of the old existing historic settlement patterns, you had that density. But, we've just gone, over the years, to a less dense pattern.
I mean, you mean in statewide, not, not, yeah, I mean, Bristol is.
Not just Bristol's pretty.
It's been pretty consistent, it's been pretty consistent with what it's done, as far as density, we don't have.
In our villages, I think, is more raker.
Yeah.
And, and that, it should, but a lot of the small villages have a happy lot.
Right.
Which doesn't match what is historically there. So, they can't kind of fill in, and, and then.
Right, and, and so, of course, it's two mindsets on infill, too, but, that's a whole, this whole nother philosophical discussion moving on to density, but, some people like having dirt. I mean, it's nice having a backyard.
Crabble?
Well, yeah, you don't have to choose to live.
I mean, I have, I have more zoning complaints in the village than I do outside the village. And it's usually, one neighbor's pissed off at another neighbor about something trivial, that I have to tell him that's not a zoning violation. I, I feel two, three calls easily a month in the village, and maybe two a year outside of the village.
So, you're spread out.
Yeah.
You can't see, you can't see what your neighbors do, because they don't care.
So, the rationale behind the densities is, the density restrictions is, they don't want the town to become too dense.
It's a.
Urban.
The, the larger lot size kind of evolved years ago, when people were just thinking more suburban, everyone had their big enough lot, and it just got applied, you know, with a yard. But now, it's difficult to kind of fill in in certain places, and, because of those regulations. And density tends, a higher density or a higher, you know, more, tends, people get nervous about it. And, that's something that, you know, I think there needs to be some education on, because a lot of the time, they, they are in a place that, you know, you have a couple of people living in a big house that actually could probably have an apartment in, and you wouldn't even feel the difference at all, and you would be able to, you know, an apartment or an accessory dwelling unit, or, you know, I don't know. There are a lot of.
Well, yeah, accessory dwelling doesn't change your density under.
Right, and that's, that's another thing that we, we should talk about in, in here, a little bit of encouraging that, because that's a way to, if you have a big house, like, well, Kevin, is your house, is that an accessory dwelling unit in your house, or is it an apartment?
It's an apartment.
Apartment, but in my house. Yeah, so, I could have, like, in my house, I could have an accessory dwelling unit that had its own entrance and all that rented out, and it would, it would be, if, if it was in, within the regulations that we set in our, for the percentage.
Thirty percent.
That used to be three percent, and some people are looking at actually making that more, because if you have a smaller house, it's hard to do that, but.
You just make, you open up, what you should do is open up your densities for duplexes and multi, multi.
Right, right.
Reduce those, reduce the densities for that type of housing, and not mess around with your accessory dwelling unit, leave accessories dwelling unit at what it is. As soon as you start increasing that number, oh, you're creating duplexes, and you're doing an ad around on.
Well, well, I, I'm not gonna debate that, but there are other ways to, to add density without actually building houses. Especially in, in a, in a village like ours, that has a lot of big old houses, and we don't have big families in them so much anymore as we used to, so.
Yeah, I hear that, we aren't having a population boost, but we're getting a shortage of housing, where they need so many more housing if there's not that many more people, or it's a smaller, it's a smaller family units.
Right, but where are they gonna go, you know, it's a.
So, you know, I won't say, maybe they've got a big old house, or they've got a little one, and they still can't afford it, but.
And, and one of the arguments, too, on the, breaking up the larger homes in the last round that we did, when we redid the zoning, and one of the big pushes was, Spring Street's a great example. About, over half those homes were converted from homes into, from single-family homes into multi-unit rentals. The dynamic of that street changed, it went from single-family home, neighborhood feel, to rental property. And it's a totally different dynamic that they feel on that street.
On Spring Street?
Those who lived there. Yeah. One, one of the residents.
Somebody is, sure, but, yeah, that surprises me, yeah, I, I just don't know, I haven't.
Chico was, was one of the big, I mean, he lived on the corner, and he talked about. Chico was, was one of the big, I mean, he lived on the corner and he talked about, how everything around him went from it being a neighborhood, single-family feel, sort of village feel to rentals, and he doesn't know most of his neighbors because they turn over every six months, every 12 months. The access of, none of the, none of the lots were designed for parking.
I think that was his one neighbor, but whatever. I know that was.
And that's why we also discussed, like, on West Street, not allowing multifamily on West Street. That was, they didn't want to see some of those big, larger homes converted into rentals because it changes the dynamic of the home.
Oh, interesting.
That was the rationale.
Yeah, well, that's, that is the problem, too, because there's very different opinions on it.
Mm-hmm.
Anyways.
So, we do, we do need to kind of work through goals and policies for this section, and I'm wondering if having one or two people as a subcommittee, just sort of, that I can communicate with, and we could start hashing that out and then bring it to the full committee. Tom might be a good person to start with.
Yeah.
We could just start with the existing goals and policies and work through.
No, I can work with you on it because I'm doing some of this, actually, in the county level.
So, the scenario was goals, policies, actions.
Yeah, we talked about looking at it like a two-tier instead of a three-tier. And Regent does that a lot, so we have the goals.
And for this section, it might make more sense as a goals and policies and less of a, especially for the housing and demographics.
Do you want me to start by saying what we have and then, okay.
So, is the whole density thing going to come up in this town plan somewhere?
Um, not specifically. We can talk about, we can have certain, we'll have certain, we'll have goals. And it'll come up in the. Because the plan informs the regulator.
It would be in the form of, you know, encouraging denser village growth or something like that.
So, there's, 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 there are state, there are state statutes. Vermont has some pretty strong goals about trying to concentrate development in village centers and towns and keeping open land, you know, so to try to really promote that, you know, sort of. So, that's kind of along those goals that, or, you know, along that thinking.
So, but.
And so, but then that, you know, that has to match with what our regs says.
So, with that being said, though, you can, also, your plan, Mark's question is a very valid one. You should, if your desire as a group is to see a change in the dynamic of, whether it's density or growth patterns, those are statements you should be making in this document.
Right, that's in this section, in the goals and actions.
I mean, yeah, so you take that, the raw data and the narrative that's there, and then hopefully your policies, you address that. Because from there, when you rewrite the next round of rewrite of your zoning, you would use this document you're creating today.
In form.
To guide, they have to follow each other.
We're not really following the zoning, even though we did the zoning more recently. It's, you know, circular, so.
So, the zoning board at some point rewrites the zoning.
No, the planning commission does, yeah, so.
That's your next fun question.
It's all in your hands.
And then, sort of, building on, so I think we're all almost done, except moving along with those for maybe not the next meeting, but a couple of meetings down the line. We'll have, Eli and Tom will work together on a set of goals, policies, actions.
Yeah, we can just.
Bring this back.
Yeah.
And then I talked briefly with Kevin about working on the economic development section and then bringing that back to the group, if that is still okay with you.
Sure.
Okay, then I will get you down the line and we can talk about that.
Tell me what you want me to do.
Did anyone have a chance to, oh, I'm jumping into it, jumping into it. To read the public health and safety section.
Was that sent out a while ago?
I think we handed it out, paper handed out.
Oh, okay.
So, I have a couple comments about this housing one towards the end. It seems to me, in kind of a nutshell, we get down to the last page and it's just like, hmm.
I know.
It really slows right down.
Yes, I didn't finish. I didn't finish it, right.
I see this chart about gross median rent, and I don't see it referred to anywhere.
Over here.
Figure X. And then I guess the last thing is.
They're all figure X, by the way.
That's a ten, that's ten in Latin or Roman.
Ten, okay, sorry. And then this last paragraph, I think I know what you're saying, but it bothers me a little bit, that, you know, there's, there seems to be capacity in at least Kilburn's Trailer Park. And of course, there's a lot of, there's a lot of need over there for, as you say, enforcing health and building codes and stuff like that. But there seems to be capacity and there seems to be an aversion to mobile homes or something. Maybe that's just my.
Well.
Who does that?
It used, I mean, twenty, thirty years ago, you were on a waiting list to get a lot over there. Now, it's like you walk down, at least the sidewalk to Mount Haven, you can see, like, there's a couple of open lots that are just perpetually.
There's currently two open lots over there.
And I don't know the situation if they're for sale or not, but.
They are.
Okay. When you say aversion, I mean, that's a, not in the writing, there isn't.
No, but I, out there.
You're saying that people aren't buying.
Yeah, well, that is.
Out there, it's like, used to be a starter home for a lot of people.
Right.
Now, it's like, oh, I don't want that because they depreciate type thing, and I don't know how we.
Well, they don't make them, they really don't create new parks anymore, because it's not affordable.
But we got a park with open lots in it.
Right.
Oh, the community trust has some pretty high standards on what they want to put back in there.
Right.
So, if they got an older home, right? They don't?
They would prefer to see new, new mobile homes placed in there, but they don't necessarily require new mobile homes to be placed in there.
But they've got, they've got some pretty, they've got income requirements, so that you've got, right?
Yes.
Low.
Low income, yeah.
Right. Only if you're going to, that only depends if, not for anyone going in there, do they?
I believe it's for anyone, I could be wrong, I'll have to, we'll have to double-check on that. But I think the Asen County Trust ones.
Right. Well, they try, I mean, they, not, they're different. There's, I think they have different kind of earmark different.
I mean, that's all fine, but it's, just like, I guess I have a concern that the mindset, and I don't know if we can do anything about it, but the mindset generally in the general population is.
I think there's some of that out there, but unfortunately, there is. I think we're fortunate that Asen County Community Trust actually owns these parks, because they, they're not trying to make a profit off them. And a lot of places, they do make quite a profit off mobile home parks, but, you know, so they maintain them and they try to subsidize them. And because, yeah, you're right, it is, it's the only option for a lot of people. And unfortunately, they do depreciate, and that's kind of, they've tried to get.
You don't think twice about buying a car.
I mean, one of the interesting stories, there was a, there's a father-son combo down, I was sitting in Danny's camp. Been buying up in the last few years some of these aging mobile home parks. And one of the things they, to try to reinvigorate the desire for folks to live there is they've placed standards upon the lots, like, the mobile homes can't be more than 10 years of age. You're required to maintain the property.
So, there's like an association.
Oh, they're basically turning, they're basically turning mobile home, trailer parks into condo associations and at the private level, and it's changed the dynamic. There's actually waiting lists in these people's mobile home parks for people to.
Well, yes.
In that last paragraph, that is, it says on the local, on the local level enforcing health and building codes. Who does that?
Who does that, Chris?
No, nobody does. There's no such thing. The health codes.
On the local level, that's, that was my.
The health, it enforces health codes, there is no way they enforce the building codes.
Right. People would dispute that. I've, I've, but not me. That, that, that they can be inspected by, I know, I was talking to Liz Herman, and she said, you know, certain things, like foundations and.
We have no, we have no capabilities of doing that.
Right, right, so it's, it's on more of a state level.
Fire safety is required. And they punch it off to the contractor.
Right, okay.
And there's four, basically, parks in Bristol.
Well, there's two in, two in the village.
Yep, you've got one in South 116, you've got one in Rockydale. Carvisville would be probably considered one.
There's a couple little pockets, there's one, another one, Maple or something.
Maple Ridge, that's what I'm talking about, South 116.
Blazes.
That's out.
What's the housing by a river? Put up the gate post.
Oh, that's Hunt Farm, that's, I don't, which.
Oh, the one up on a hill?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's like apartment.
Yeah, it's low-income rental apartments.
Okay.
They, the reason why they've gated off right now is they're rehabbing the entire structure. It was in desperate need of a facelift. Similar to the retirement home, the retirement senior housing that's on Mount Street. Pleasant Hills, that's a huge renovation this past summer.
That last chapter, paragraph, needs work.
Yeah, it's need to work on it.
Yeah, I need to stop working on it. I was trying to finish it.
That's the most important section, right?
I was trying to say, because you guys wanted, you wanted it, so like, we're sending it out. Like, well, all right, we're not done, but here it comes.
You feel there's a different voice from the other two sections?
Yeah, it's an undone voice. It's a stressed out voice.
Okay, so maybe we will look at that, the end of that one more time, along with the goals, policies section in a couple minutes. I think, oh, if there were their comments, we started to jump to it and then jump back for the public health and safety section.
Basically, that's looking at fire, police, it's a lot of information, just, it's kind of bullet point. But it just has a, it's just a. What?
You said you handed that out?
Last time. You read, did you read that?
But you never emailed it?
This was, I handed it out last time. I don't think I emailed it ever.
We can email it now.
So, I took a quick look at it. So, I was thinking, the first paragraph's fire and rescue.
Needs more of an introductory paragraph.
Well, to me, it seems like there should be fire and then, like, there's one paragraph there and then underneath, emergency medical services talks. So, it seems to me to take that last paragraph.
It should just be fire.
Yeah, rescue is missing out on it anyway.
It's the French spelling.
Rescue.
Like, requ.
How come that didn't show up? Oh, because it is.
Oh, it's not, yeah, that's weird. Maybe it's a real word, requ.
Well, it's capitalized, it's.
Yeah, it's Q again.
Okay, that's known, yeah.
But taken out altogether, aren't you taking it out altogether?
Healthcare, Wellness and Human Services. Bristol is fortunate, is fortunate to me is subjective.
Bristol has a variety of healthcare providers.
Would be my pitch.
It's okay to be a little subjective sometimes. You can say good things about your community.
Ever fewer. I'm from a technical document.
No one ever said the plan couldn't be subjective. What? Compared to some places.
You, we use the word multiple healthcare providers, where?
A variety.
A variety.
So, there's some dentists.
Okay, there's lots of dentists.
Okay, yeah, I'll get it.
And there's, and it's not just, you know, that's not just your primary care. There's lots of different types of healthcare.
It says two primary care practices, two dental practices and a pharmacy.
I think there's one primary care.
That's where it's going, one of the primary cares is closed down.
And one of the dentist, dental practices closed down.
Red, is it red?
Nope, Mountain.
Mountain Health and Red Clover.
I think they've merged.
Merged, right, so, but Mountain Health was.
Red Clover is.
Still going.
Yeah.
Yes, but the Mountain.
And there's, and the one on the park, Park Dental is still going.
Still there, so there's two, instead of, it used to be three.
Right, I thought there's a third.
So, we need to check these numbers.
So, then.
I'm never writing another thing.
So, then it says several other practices are located in town. I don't know if we want to get into more of what they are.
Well, then.
But, so then, so I just throw that out there. And then, but the Porter Hospital and Fletcher Allen Hospital, those have gone through name changes.
Right.
Yeah.
UVM Healthcare now or whatever.
Yeah, it changes once a year.
It's a small quarter, but is that a thing because it's part of the UVM network? Okay, those are all.
So, and then, and then the other things, we don't talk, do we want to talk about elderly care such as, is it, does that merit its own sentence, such as the place over in Maple Street? And there's a few other homes that take care of elderly people or?
Right, I, let's see. Wow, I think it is mentioned in the, it's mentioned in the housing section. The Pleasant Hills, and so is Living Well. Where's Living Wells? Oh, Living Wells here, isn't it? I'll talk about Living Wells somewhere. Not just a list.
Age Well?
Age Well's an organization.
Different, okay.
I think I'm, I talked about Living Well in the housing section, I'm pretty sure. But, yeah, we do need to talk about it. Because that, as for a, not a goal, but an objective, I think, is to. To.
Pretty important.
Try to, you know, look at developing or creating more.
Encouraging.
Encouraging developments for elder care.
Yeah, there's Pleasant Hills more elderly housing and, and.
It's considered low-income elderly housing. Living, Living Well is a little more assisted. Right, right.
And they specialize in Alzheimer's and.
At Living Wells?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't notice that. So, Living Well would be more of a healthcare, but Pleasant Hills is more of housing, because it's not assisted.
Okay, and there's a few homes, like Mary Bingham.
Right, and that's the same thing as childcare, though.
Okay, yeah.
They're out there and.
Well, the difference between that and in-home elder care and childcare, childcare is like a nine-to-five. In-home elder care, this, these are living, like, Mary.
Right.
Peter Kuznow, you've got Linda Rosca, I mean, there's probably half a dozen of them.
They're more 24/7.
Yeah, I don't know if you, how much you say about it, but there are other options.
More general. Similar to like home share as well. I mean, that's more, in a way, more of a program you need. More in a way, more of a program. You need, I'm sure they're registered and they have.
Well, I'm sure they have all sorts of regulations.
Same with childcare.
Did it for a number of years.
Yeah. I mean, they, I think if we, we're not going to list them all, but that they exist in the community.
Particularly that, to, to, particularly for springboarding off the plan to allow. These type of things in the, to be had if we would.
On a smaller, on a smaller scale, they're kind of a private thing, but. But then they start getting legal and asking maybe here.
But.
Then they should be mentioned by them.
I mean, I think we defined them in zoning as it was, as far as. In-home care, care, so I'd have to look at.
Yeah, we had to figure out what it's called.
We haven't had anyone apply for one in a while.
So there's a term. There must be parameters or that they have to, like with in-home childcare, you can't have more than six. Kids before you have to get licensed.
You have to be licensed to do in-home care, elder care, I believe.
Elder care. Right, but there must be, there must be parameters like that. They have to meet with elder care.
Well, there's, there's levels of care.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, you and I can look at some of those lists and make sure that last paragraph is accurate.
That, and that, just Kevin, so in terms of economic development piece, it kind of ties into like home business too. You know, so that's the same sort of thing to be able to encourage that in the zoning.
All right.
All right.
Everybody feel okay with that section? Some of those changes, and we'll give you another chance to look at it.
Definitely email that.
Yeah, well.
We did.
You didn't do that.
Oh, I know, I just.
No, no, it was given to you when you were here last week.
You have?
Check your guitar case.
Um, okay, so it's not a clock.
It's not a Saturday.
It's not a Saturday. So for next time. We enhance the energy plan, hopefully. We'll have enough folks to.
We gotta do it.
Finish it off.
So on that, the question came up earlier on the forum. So based on your.
Home rules.
Policies and procedures of the Bristol Vermont Land and Commission. Your quorum statement is the following, following, a quorum shall be constituted by a majority of the full membership. Any action must be taken by concurrent of the majority of the commissioned members, not a majority of those present. So it needs five votes to pass. On any action petition numbers.
Okay, so the, one of the, another section that we need to take a look at is the flood resilience section. Which I am almost done drafting. We've put together a couple maps if folks want printed copies, just because I know that those are sometimes harder to see on a computer screen. So I have those if people want them, but we will send those out also within the next few days.
Is that going in with the public health and safety?
No, it's a standalone, because it's a newly required section, I think in the environment section.
Natural Resources or it, it's standalone. We have hazard mitigation, we have hazard mitigation in health and safety.
The emergency management made me think of the hazard mitigation.
Oh, emergency.
For the resilience, that refer to how quickly you recover or what they do after.
That is, that is a good question, depending on who's using the word resilience, whether it's bouncing back after a disaster or flooding. But I think in general, it's just supposed to be, so there's, there's sort of two different levels. So the state requirement is to basically have a section of your plan that has maps of where river corridors are. There's a separate program for adopting standards that basically are much more concrete. Saying thou shalt not, and that's a separate state process. Right.
We're not proposing that in this, it's not.
Yeah, so this is, this is basically just following the, what the, the state says has to be in your plan. Which there's a description here from the planning manual. Your plan is required to include a flood resilience plan that identifies flood hazard and fluvial erosion hazard areas. Based on river corridor maps provided by the Secretary of Natural Resources. And designates those areas to be protected, including floodplains, river corridors, land adjacent to streams, well ends and upland forests. To reduce the risk of flood damage to infrastructure and improved property. And it may reference an existing local hazard mitigation plan, which Bristol has, so. We're going to work in some of that language because it's already written. So the maps that we have are pretty fine scale. We did sort of the whole town and. A blown up version of the downtown and Hewitt Road area, where you can see buildings and sort of how they correspond. So we can take a look at that and then discuss the language once I know it out. That works for next one.
And, and those, as Andrew said, those zones on there are FEMA and then state river corridor.
Were they digitized or did you guys have to digitize it?
The FEMA one is a digitized product, it is not an official FEMA product. They are in the process of updating this in the next five years.
They've been in the process for a while.
So these actually date to 1985.
Yeah, well, it's better than the 1980s or 70s ones.
Or the 1800s.
But yes, these are, these are not official boundaries.
Just say, I think it's somewhere Pittsburgh or Brandon.
Yeah, so there's.
Want one of these, Chris? Maps?
More paper?
No.
We'll, we'll send it, we'll send it.
I assume you're just going to email it all out.
Would it, does it make sense to leave one for folks that aren't here, like Bill or somebody else or?
I won't be here till next time. It's my guess.
Take a look and see if, if you can recognize your house or any other buildings that are on there.
Kevin, in the minutes, did you write down 3:24? Did you write down the open house time on there? I think you.
Six o'clock on the 24th.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Is there any, does anybody know if they will not be able to be here next time? Mark?
So next meeting we have is fourth.
Right, and the hearing.
For a small PUD, so. That information will be on the screen.
Okay, so we will do that.
Should not have anything else to do.
No, I, I, you got, I, so you're being, I, you're, that hearing should take more than a half an hour.
Right, and then the plan is to. Follow up on the enhanced energy plan. Vote adoption. So, last chance, board, to bring up any issues that you have with that plan. That would encourage you to support it or not. To support it. Kevin. Nothing we can do? It just depends how you feel that day.
So bring cookies.
So what?
So here, here's.
What's bugging you?
The thing that bothers me.
Okay.
Is there's a lot of talk about this whole concept of preferential treatment. To solar farms or developers of that as part of the PUD. And we've got this little snafu in town called the natural gas project where.
What do you mean the PUD? You don't mean the P.
PUC, PUC. So everybody's gung ho to, you know, do that, so it cuts. You know, it gives more bite at the table, which it may or may not do. And there's some economic incentives for developers by doing that. And then we've got a village of people that through a litigation process that's totally different from this. But nonetheless, it's the same people that promote it, promote this, that is denying people in town. The ability to save money, a lot of taxpayers to save money through the option of connecting to gas or not. And until, in my mind, until we get that straightened out, we shouldn't be walking down this path of. Talking about enhanced energy when, you know, we don't, we don't have a balance in what our offerings or potential offerings are. To connect to.
That's sort of personal.
It is.
I see what you're saying, but I don't think those two, I personally don't think those two personally should.
That's my.
Be influencing each other and I, you know, I don't fully, I get it, I get it, I get it. Because there's more than this, that group of people. I think they'll, you know, I think there's a. And I don't, I don't know all the specifics about that case or why even if the whole thing was dropped. You know, it was for, I think, a lot of reasons. But I don't really know.
It was dropped because it was going to become financially burdensome like most court cases in two.
Right. What?
Yeah, well, I mean, they don't have to. But until, I'm, I'm not interested in until, until there's openness to get through that issue and afford people in the town. The, the choice to connect and potentially save, not village. Well, the town saves too. Because it's going to increase.
Well, there's many in the town that wouldn't benefit at all.
Oh, the town, well, it will increase the grant list. So it'll offset taxes. It has the capability to save money eating town buildings. So the town as a whole will not benefit as much as somebody connecting, but the town as a whole will benefit. Moncton's, of course, Moncton's got a transmission line going through their place, but their grant list just popped up like crazy. Because of, because of that and then.
Their grand list?
So, so property value.
Yep.
Oh, well, that's what the grand list.
But moving forward with their energy plan, and Regent's had a similar situation. Where they said, we want to vote, and the town said, okay. We'll have a vote and it went for gas and, and they're doing their energy plan. I mean, I think that, I think they need, I mean, I understand. You know, you know, the personal issue and a lot, I mean, it's with a lot of people, but I think they need to be separated. I mean, I think both things could function and they need to be independent.
I think we've done as much as we can to balance the plan with the regulations and not be overly zealous. But I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced that the, the step process is, is not in sync.
The step. Back, getting back to the natural, what happened with the natural gas?
I think they're two completely separate things.
I just think they're separate. I mean.
I did think there's a somewhat of a relation in the nature of them, but I think that they're two completely separate.
I mean, this was going along and then that happened. It's not like, no, I, it wasn't. A plan, you know, it wasn't a plotted out thing as, I mean, I'm not aware of anything like that. There are certain individuals that. But it wasn't tied to this project. I know you don't believe that.
Well, part of, one of the issues, the icing between, the, the title's deceiving, enhanced energy plan. It's, you don't. It sounds like it should be addressing all energy issues and you're not. It's really coming down to, it's really a citing document. It's really what the premise is behind it.
Yeah.
To give you leverage on future renewable energy citing.
And, and some, and yeah, it's, so. When it comes down to the energy section of the town plan. That's where I believe that you as a group really need to address everything else that's not in this enhanced energy plan. The, whether it's current energy uses, whether it's future uses, whether it's natural gas, whether you're talking. Geothermal, whether you're talking water, I mean, there are so many energy types that were not addressed in your enhanced energy plan. That you'd need to address it in your standard energy section of your town plan for it to be a comprehensive approach towards energy in our community.
That's fine, we have that section and.
Yeah, was this, was an outgrowth of the state bill that just.
It is.
And that's, that was the goal of, yeah.
It is because.
Right, what I'm saying is, is the title's deceiving. A lot of people feel that once the enhanced energy plans is done. All your energy planning for your community is done.
We've planned it all.
And it's not, so.
Well, you look at the energy plan that was in. The existing plan, there's not much there. Right, so we can, I mean, that, there can be more there plus, I mean.
Right, my, where bonus is that to address some of Kevin's issues, that may be a very viable place to address this. And it actually, I believe, would have more teeth. Whether it's Act 250, whether it's a hearing, if your town plan addresses a, an energy source in the town plan versus the enhanced energy plan. When it comes, especially the litigation side or Act 250, they look at your town plans with more strength. I think they would, the enhanced energy plan, which is, we're going to talk about citing. It's got some.
I mean, that's, it's citing in a big way, but, well, and other things, but citing was a big reason for this. For these plans because there were, you know, towns like New Haven were just getting sort of run over by these big projects and they had no. No say whatsoever and. I mean, that was, that's one reason.
But we should make that a priority if you have intersection. Okay, that'll be maybe after the fluvial resilience, flood resilience.
What?
And then we need a motion.
I think a motion to adjourn.
No, it's not later than.
Oh, it was 9:30 this week?
Yeah, wait, yeah, you gotta do an extra.
He's making up for time, but you gotta stay by yourself to do that.
Dude, just, if you're asking, somebody made a motion to adjourn, are you?
No, we're not adjourned, go and second it. Did you second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right, there we go.